Good morning and welcome to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM Monday, October 17, 2011. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before I ask for an acceptance of the agenda, under Item 4 Finance, Item A, this is the resolution requesting award of a contract for steel rolloff dumpster containers. We're going to table that item today. And I believe, Mr. Bush, you're going to bring that back tomorrow or in a future meeting?
It'll probably be first of December.
Okay, so we're going to table that item. And with that change being made, I'll ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor. Motion carries 5-0. The first item today is under Public Safety. We have a resolution requesting authorization to accept funds from the Georgia Trauma Care Network Commission. Our presenter is Chief Brad Johnson of the Fire Department, Exhibit Number 1. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair Commissioners. This morning, I'm here to ask permission to accept a check from the Georgia Trauma Commission for uncompensated trauma care for our patient who's transported. These funds are targeted for EMS personnel for training in the EMS field. These funds are distributed basically through a grant process as requested by the Georgia Trauma Commission. The amount of the check is for $6,110.43 that we have the check received already, that we have received the check.
Does any board member have a question pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution authorizing the acceptance of these funds, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a resolution requesting authorization to renew a service agreement with Motorola. Our presenter is Don Ash, Director of Emergency Communications, Exhibit Number 2. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair Commissioners. This is an agreement for our 911 foam equipment. And the reason behind doing a month-to-month renewal contract is, as we go forward with our building project, we expect to be transitioning to our new foam equipment, hopefully by March, which will give us some added cost savings. So we chose just to renew on a month-to-month, so we will be in line as the new building cut over, we can end the contract for the existing equipment.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? Mr. Alata?
Good morning, sir.
I note that this is a contract from July 1st through December 31st. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And today's October?
Yes, sir. When we first did it, we were trying to project our building project time, and once we entered into the negotiation with Motorola, we just, they asked us to do a month-to-month so they could get the contract resolved.
So the existing contract we're under had a provision that upon termination that went to month-to-month?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that takes care of it then. Okay.
Are there any other questions? If not, you have before you a resolution approving the service agreement with Motorola through December 31, 2011, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Finance, we have a resolution requesting approval to amend the ACCG Defined Benefit Plan for Henry County Employees and to adopt Agreement Amendment Number 2. Our presenter is Mike Bush, Finance Director, Exhibit Number 4. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. From time to time, we wind up getting these things from GEBCor because IRS will change the definition of something in the IRS guidelines. And in this particular situation, our current plan allows for pre-retirement death benefits payable in a lump sum or an annuity. So if somebody's working and they die while working, their family has two choices. The IRS says that a death benefit payable to beneficiaries under the plan must be incidental to the retirement benefits, so they're not allowing that annuity. It all has to be one lump sum payment. And that's what we're here today, is to go back in there and change the terminology in our current plan to abide by the IRS guidelines based on pre-retirement death benefits.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution to amend the ACCG Defined Benefit Plan for Henry County Employees as required by the Internal Revenue Service, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Moving on to Planning and Zoning Services, we have a resolution requesting award of a bid for the LCI Supplemental Study for the I-75 Western Parallel Connector Feasibility Study. Our presenter is Sherri Hopson Matthews, Director of Planning and Zoning, Exhibit Number 5. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. As Chairman Mathis has indicated, the request before you this morning is a resolution to approve and award a bid to JB-A for the Hudson Bridge-Jonesboro Road Supplemental Study. In your packages, you should have received, as part of the review process, a list of the consultants that submitted for this process and what staff did internally with the assistance from one representative from the City of Stockbridge and then internal staff members from DOT, SPOS, and Planning and Zoning has reviewed the actual proposals and then shortlisted the consultants for two. What we did was we called those two consultants in, interviewed them, and then staff made a final decision on who we thought would best fit what we were trying to accomplish with this proposal. The representative that was selected, again, is JB-A. We are convinced that this firm will certainly follow the process that was outlined in the proposal and will meet all of GDOT standards for a preliminary concept report. Staff is recommending approval and asking that you allow the chairman to execute the contract.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? Mr. Stamey?
Sherri, our portion of the 50% match will come out of SPOS 3, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Alata?
This was already approved, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Earlier this year?
Yes, sir. It was actually approved, there was three processes. One process came to you all to actually apply for the grant, and then once we were awarded, I brought that back to you all to actually accept the grant, I mean, accept the award.
Right, this is just going out. The one thing I'm not certain of is, did we go out for a bid and tell them it was $100,000, or did they bid an amount and it just so happened to be $100,000?
No, sir. We actually told them, because that was the amount that we were awarded. And after, during the pre-proposal review meeting, that amount was provided. It also was released through ARC's process, so all of the consultants knew what the amount was. Now, they most certainly could have come back and indicated, "We're going to have to do this project for more or less." And that was part of our interview process with the two teams that we actually called in. After we did interview the two consultants, we did a one-on-one with the consultant team that we felt would best fit this proposal, and they were able to keep their costs at the $100,000.
It's just a matter of what services they could offer greater than somebody else at the $100,000 figure?
And based on what we were looking for. I think the end result is that we wanted a report that we could submit that would be close to a full-blown concept plan, so that we could, once it's completed, we could send it out to a contractor to look at and begin the process. So with the two consultants that we interviewed, JB-A was able to offer us everything that we were looking for, in addition to making sure that they could follow the PDP process that's required by the Georgia Department of Transportation.
Now, there is presently a map that is drawn that shows various areas are going to do what, and what is this, how is this different than what's already been done?
Absolutely. The original request that was approved by the board in July of last year was the actual study. And as part of the study, they looked at the assessment of the area, but there was no true road alignment. There were some alignments that were proposed, but none of those alignments had been engineered. Environmental issues had not been addressed, so this study will literally get down to take you from a 5,000-degree level to a much lower level where we will, at the end of this proposal and at the end of this study, we will have a true alignment. They're going to look at environmental issues, and we should be able to go forward with this, in that the study did not do that.
Are stakeholders in that area going to be involved in this process?
Absolutely. We will have two stakeholder meetings, where we will contact all of the major stakeholders that are going, that may possibly be affected, but we will also notify the surrounding property owners.
And this is scheduled to be completed by April of 2012?
Yes, sir. It has to be completed by April.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Holder?
This will be a complete set of plans ready for letting a contract?
That is my understanding, and Rocky is kind of co-chairing with me on that, so he may, well, hold on, I'm getting some...
The reason I ask this question is because if it's $100,000 for this particular study, or the study's been done, now we're coming with this, then what is it actually going to cost us to get it out to bid? That's the reason for my question.
This will be a concept, but the concept, I don't even, but the concept is going to have actually a true alignment, like Sherri just mentioned. I think in the previous study that they did, it was more of a, not only, it was more of a hubs or what kind of communities that we're going to be surrounding this alignment that we didn't have. I think in the previous, they had two or three locations. This one is going to define a location. Hopefully, of course, we'll have all the stakeholders in place, so there'll be no changes on this alignment. And it also will, like Sherri mentioned, will address environmental issues. Usually, if you look at a big project like this, it may be a little bit more to do a concept or just about the same amount of money, but with this, once, hopefully, T-SPOS passes, I didn't say that, but sorry. But it's one of the projects that is in the list, we can then design, send this out for design for a full-blown set. You know, we'll have cross-sections, and this will have a profile, an alignment and a profile. It won't have cross-sections, but it will have an alignment and a profile.
I guess my next question would be then, if the state is having a 50, basically in this case, a 50% match, what is the projected cost to do a full-blown engineering plan now to get it to where you could let it for contract?
That would be, you know, of course, that, being that you already have the concept, you're probably looking at a range, this is 200 miles, so you're looking at around 300 to 350 for a full-blown design.
So 300, an additional 350 to 400,000 to get a full set of engineering plans? Okay. Just wanted to not mislead anybody and make them think that for $100,000...
No, sir. This will not have a full-blown survey either, so, you know, that's another thing that we would have to have surveyed. So this will take us a little bit ahead of the game, but it will not be, with this design, you won't be able to put it off a bit, no, sir.
Mr. Bowman, did you have a question?
Well, part of the question that I was going to ask Mr. Holder, our Commissioner Holder took care of that, because it would be by the time you do the environmentals, you know, and do the drawings, I would be surprised if $400,000 would cover everything that you're going to end up having to do. So I was just going to make sure that was plain, but Commissioner Holder, you're right on top of it. Thank you, sir.
As usual.
As usual, yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Alata?
The proposed scope, it says distribution by team members, and there's WE Cultural and McGP, and the smallest percent, or the, less than 50% of it's going to JB-A. They're subcontractors, or what is all that about?
You're referring to the proposed scope and which task number, Commissioner?
Proposed scope, here it is, this here.
Task, is it a specific task number or just the breakdown of distribution by team members?
Yeah, by team member. It's just got other names on there, and I thought we were just working with JB-A, and it appears based on this, or is others involved, or?
Yes, sir. JB-A is the prime consultant on this contract. Because JB-A is more of a planning agency, they're handling the planning aspect of it. Again, as Rocky indicated, because the focus is more on transportation, McGee Partners, as you'll see, will pretty much have 47% of the project, because a lot of it deals with engineering and alignment issues. The other individuals that are listed as team members are individuals who'll be handling maybe environmental issues, so W-E and Cultural is just 8% of the environmental aspect of it. But the contract will be with JB-A.
So basically, they're making sure they do have the proper expertise then to do the types of things versus trying to do it all in-house?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bowman?
Was there any reason that JB plus McGee, or I mean, did they partner early on, or was somebody asking them?
JB-A is actually who submitted the proposal, and I'm assuming that JB-A must have met with McGee Partners and asked them to join as part of it. But at the beginning of the proposal, McGee has been involved. Even with the interview, McGee has been involved.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It's amazing, when you look at some of these consultants, if you dig down underneath, that you'll see a lot of these companies, over and over again, that are partnering in these collaboratives for these different projects.
Absolutely.
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution awarding the supplemental study to JB-A. And, Mr. Alata, I'll look to you for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Here, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing to request to amend an ordinance regarding adult entertainment establishments. Our presenter is Michael Harris, Planning and Zoning Division Director, Exhibit Number 6. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. And again, just to reiterate, as been noted in previous times when I've been up here for this item, the staff has to date not received any applications or inquiries concerning this type of establishment, but felt it was prudent to move forward now with making changes to our current existing ordinance. As noted, this is an amendment to our existing, to our existing adult entertainment ordinance. It's not a new ordinance. We already have one in place. However, we felt it was proven at this time to make provisions to address and perhaps make it more stringent as needed. In researching this topic, we found that it is in the best interest of any community, in this case, Henry County, best interest of the health, welfare, safety, and morals of a community, to limit and regulate adult entertainment within the corporate boundaries of our county, so as to limit the adverse impact on property value, other business uses, residential uses, and public and semi-public uses, to ensure that adult entertainment uses and adult entertainment facilities do not impede development, redevelopment, or neighborhood vitalization efforts, to restrict adult entertainment and adult entertainment uses in heavily used public pedestrian areas, and also protect the patrons of adult entertainment businesses from unreasonable risk or danger. To that end, we went about the task of reviewing other jurisdictions, and worked closely with our county attorney, and reviewing and vetting through some of the other jurisdictions, how they've crafted their language. And a couple of things I really want to make sure I point out and note, the, there's a couple of key points. What we've done in this case was, we're in past years, in our previous ordinance, principally focused on proximity restrictions. We've taken those same proximity restrictions, added to them in some degree, those being 1,000 feet from motels, 1,000 feet from schools, 1,000 feet from churches. And from there, we were able to craft and come up with a map that delineated where those locations would be, but we felt it was appropriate this time to actually identify specific areas. And so what this ordinance does is identifies two specific areas that will serve as the allowable areas. And what I'd like to do at this time is actually show a map of where our existing adult entertainment areas are.
By the thousand-foot restriction from these certain, and then certain types of businesses or, such as churches, daycares, et cetera. But then, on the revised, you came back and you just designated certain areas instead. Is there any way that the thousand-foot can be combined with the designated areas?
In this case, it is.
It is.
We combined, we took those areas that were reflected, first we ran the proximity restrictions. We took all the proximity restrictions that we had previously, 1,000 feet from, again, daycare, schools, churches, there's a list of state licensed daycare centers, 1,000 feet from approved activity centers, I showed on the future land use map, 1,000 feet from parcels owned by the Henry County Board of Commissioners or Henry County Board of Education, 1,000 feet from hotels and motels, 1,000 feet from churches, government buildings, libraries, civic centers, public parks, playgrounds, and 1,000 feet within, 1,000 feet from any other establishment selling alcoholic beverages, as well as on a minimum of three acres of land. We took those restrictions and we identified a map based on those proximity restrictions. From there, we identified select areas within, that were, that met those restrictions. So the two areas that I'm about to put up, they actually incorporate those 1,000-foot proximity restrictions as well, so they meet those requirements. Again, what I wanted to show here was that this is the actual, a map of, as you can see, all the areas identified in red, those are actually based on today's current ordinance that's currently under moratorium. Those are allowable areas for adult entertainment establishments. What we're, yes, yes, sir.
Can I talk further about the red at the top of the map? Are those, yeah, are those sites designated by the City of Stockbridge, or?
No, those are, those actually fall within unincorporated Henry County. Everything you see here, the red areas, are within unincorporated Henry County.
Because those, you know, those weren't on previous maps, correct?
No, this is on, what you're looking at right now is the existing map, based on our current ordinance. This is, these are areas that are allowed based on the current proximity restrictions of our current ordinance. This is not what we're proposing today, though. But as of today, if the moratorium were not in place, these would be allowable areas. Again, we obviously have the moratorium in place through tomorrow. So I just wanted to give you an idea, give you some perspective of where we are and where we're proposing to go to. This is where we are. And now, based on the proximity restrictions I just mentioned, these are the two locations that we are proposing to limit them to. And you'll note there are two separate distinct locations, one just to the south of Exit 216, and another location north of the county in an industrial area as well. Again, both are located within industrial areas, as is mandated by our current ordinance, as well as what's proposed, that they be located within industrial M1 property. And we feel this makes the tenants of, the comments I made previously about making sure they're outside of highly-traveled pedestrian areas. A couple of the key points I'd like to point out in what we're proposing in this new ordinance is that, as noted, it establishes two designated areas which entertainment, adult entertainment establishments may be allowed to locate. It reduces the allowable, the current allowable area from 821 acres on 34 parcels, as reflected on the big map, down to 280 acres on 14 parcels. This represents a reduction of 16, 65% of the allowable area. It retains the condition that no alcoholic beverages shall be served or allowed on the premises. And again, that was one of the comments that was made by the board, not just serving on premises, but also not to be allowed on the premises, so that was added as well. Establishes a registration fee for all adult entertainment establishments, and again, it's a full vetting process that involves going through with our background checks, making sure that would apply to both the managers and, you know, and the owners of the properties. So again, that was a very thorough process. Applicants required to notify all property owners within 1,000 feet of the proposed location, and requires adult entertainment establishments to be located on a separate building on its own lot, which is also, I think, a key element that the board had brought up in previous meetings. So, again, we've gone through, we've looked at this a number of different ways, and after researching other jurisdictions, and discussing it with other jurisdictions as well, and kind of vetting it through the legal process quite extensively, I think what we have here presenting today is, is something that we feel comfortable and confident that we can uphold and defend.
I have a couple of questions looking at the map. The one, well, I guess it would apply for Stockbridge as well. Are there existing buildings already sitting on these properties?
And some of them. In the area back here, there are some industrial buildings, actually, both of them, and there are industrial buildings, both are located in industrial sites, and there are currently industrial buildings located within those areas as well. There are some vacant parcels. So again, as, one of the provisions being, you'd have to be on a separate lot, on your own, separate standalone building, so this would allow for, if someone, you know, did a desire to come within one of these areas, it does allow for that, there is, that option exists, is what I'm trying to say.
As I was looking through some of the ordinances that you provided on the CD for us, looking at one in New York, for example, they had a requirement that there be a buffer of a half a mile placed in between any business, any adult-oriented business, and I don't know if ours reflects even a buffer between those types of businesses. And they did that specifically so that, they refer to it as the development of a combat zone.
Right.
Because you don't want to strip of something like this along a rural highway. And I read through our proposed ordinance, I didn't see anything that addressed that. Was consideration given to that?
We looked initially at, again, one of the proximity restrictions was not to have you located within 1,000 feet of another type of establishment, so we used that to identify these areas. I'm trying to think if there would be a restriction that if two wanted to locate within that same area, I don't know if there'd be a restriction in place to govern against that at this time, that's what we could certainly...
Certainly add that, though.
Yeah, yeah. I think we're trying to get away from doing both proximity and identifying a specific area, and, you know, in conversations with other jurisdictions, we felt that the best way, go one or the other. So we kind of took the best of both, where we found out what all those proximity restrictions were, found areas that met those restrictions, and then from there, designated an area based on those restrictions. So that's something we can, you know, perhaps in the next portion, we have, the next item I have is dealing with ULDC and supplemental standards. If we can be addressed in there, perhaps?
Would that be the best place to address them, in the ULDC?
I was thinking that, Rocky. I'm, I'm, I'm...
Yeah, okay.
I just don't know just yet.
I mean, yeah, that's something we can certainly take a look at, perhaps addressing it, because the next item will be to incorporate it into part of the ULDC itself and establish some supplemental standards for this use, and that may well be one way to address it. And I can certainly, myself and Latanya and Sherri can sit down and kind of vet that out.
Okay. Well, considering the fact that, as reading through all the information you provided, the increase in crime, especially violent crimes associated with these types of establishments, the more we can buffer, the more, the better that we're going to be at protecting the safety of our community. The other question I had, and this one came out of Houston, they had a provision in there for immediate revocations of permits, and theirs had to do with employing minors, blighting exterior appearance or signage, chronic criminal activity. After three convictions related to one establishment, the permit could be revoked, false permit information, and required age restrictions for entry. All of those were immediate revocations. How does our ordinance address that?
Sure, if I could read Section 3-17-26, it speaks about revocation, violations, and penalties. "In the event, it is determined by licensing official that any person, firm, or incorporation has violated the terms and conditions of this article, upon appropriate notice, the license of such person may be suspended or revoked as appropriate and as decided by such official. The filing of an appeal shall suspend implementation of any proposed penalty pending final resolution of the appeal. In addition to or in lieu of suspension or revocation, any person, firm, partnership, or corporation violating provisions of this article shall be punished by a fine not to exceed $1,000 per violation, or by imprisonment for the period not to exceed 60 days, or by both such fine and imprisonment." So we do have a provision that addresses the process of going through either suspension or revocation, should they not meet the provisions of this article.
All right, and do we specifically speak to chronic criminal activity in this? Is that one of the things that we address specifically in the ordinance?
No, I don't believe we specifically call out, when you say chronic activity, so if we have a history of illegal activities occurring at one of the facilities...
Drugs, prostitution, whatever, within this establishment or associated with that establishment, is there a provision within our ordinance to immediately revoke their permit?
No, I don't think it specifically addresses that.
It's not, it's not provided in there, Madam Chairman.
And can it be provided?
It can. We certainly can put that in there, Madam Chairman. I note that the moratorium actually expires tomorrow.
Correct.
And we can have, open up, they have the public hearing, you all can reserve passing on the resolution till tomorrow night. We can have the public hearing, portion of this today, and you can vote tomorrow night, and we can certainly put those insertions in there, if that's your pleasure.
Those are just a couple of things that stood out to me as I read through the ordinances from other jurisdictions, and I'm sure other commissioners probably have questions and concerns as well. So, Mr. Holder, did you have anything you would like to have addressed?
Yeah, I'd like to. First of all, Michael, I want to commend you for the, or the committee that did the research on this, and especially with the CD, or the DVD that you gave us, that covered from Florida to Texas... that covered from Florida to Texas to California to New York and a few Georgia. I was a little bit surprised that there was not more Georgia in it. But what is, what is the license fee today for adult entertainment here?
I don't believe we have one today. Not one, the one does not exist. And we saw that, that was a pretty common thread we saw in other jurisdictions. And the justification behind that, obviously, is background checks that go into this, searching, you know, the background of those who are either going to, the owners and/or the managers as well. So, I mean, there is some time and effort that goes into investigating, researching these proposed businesses.
Well, I know, I was here when the current ordinance was brought up. And I'm going to defer to the county attorney for this, but we can become as restrictive as we want to be, but we also have a balancing effect as to what we can legally sustain. And I want to ask the attorney, as far as, from a constitutional standpoint, is the, is ours, does our ordinance currently, or the proposed ordinance, meet the constitutional challenges that it could?
It is my opinion that it does, Commissioner Holder.
And is it legally defensible?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, because as we add, and as you saw through the DVD, there are varying opinions in various court cases as to what the adult entertainment does to property values, dead zones, crime rates. So all of that's debatable. And I know in this particular approach that we took, we have all of a sudden restricted this to one area. So when we're talking about, I know in the New York case, you're talking about with a half mile or whatever between, we have immediately created a challenge that I could see someone to come in. Because in this area right here, and the one in the stop, the north end, there's not a half mile, you know, between the subject property and what we're talking about. So I'm just saying, there could be challenges there. I like this because at least you have, you have isolated the area to a smaller area that you're going to have this in. And I think the law will not allow you to make it so restrictive that you cannot have adult entertainment. That's the theory, and that's the reason we're approaching it. So if it meets the challenges, there's probably still some tweaking. I'm not questioning that at all. But we need to look at it because it's a balancing effect as far as we can make it so restrictive, we'll lose the challenge in court, or we can leave it so loose, we'll end up with undesirables that we certainly don't want. And I'm sure there's the things that we haven't seen, or hasn't come to mind, that's in this one, too. But you'll never get it perfect.
That's right.
Anyone else with a comment or question? Mr. Alletta?
You mentioned earlier, Michael, the three acres.
Yes, sir.
You said it has to be on three acres, is that correct?
I'm sorry, no, it's a, we're at one acre minimum. It is one acre minimum. I think the previous, the existing map was based on three acres.
Why wouldn't we reduce it from three to one?
We went back through and looked at, based on the proximity restrictions, and we went back and forth between the three and the one. And I think the, based on the proximity restrictions, when you add it back in, down to the, up to the three, it restricts it almost to a point where there's hardly anything left. And these lots met those restrictions. I think if we went to three acres, I think it would still meet three acres, actually, based on these. And I think another reason had to do with M1 restrictions, our current, because it's going to be sitting in the, it has to be an M1 property. And one of the requirements within M1 property for use within M1 is a minimum one acre. So we want to make sure we stay consistent with M1 property as well. I honestly, if it went to three acres, I don't think it would have any impact on the locations that were selected. I think they're all over three acres.
If that is the case, and that's what you're selecting, couldn't we put it back into at least restrict the ability to have three of them on three acres versus one in three acres?
Go back and run the numbers. But again, I think part of it was wanting to be consistent with land uses within M1 property. You know, one of the requirements we have on our books right now is M1 has to be a minimum of one acre. I just want to make sure we remain consistent with that. But I can certainly go back and look and pull that map.
Well, to Commissioner Holder's point, it needs to be legally defensible. But at the same time, if it is restricting it back to the three acres we had, I would suggest, especially if these properties are in fact three acres and would qualify and wouldn't lose anything, provided it's still legally defensible.
If we could stop right there for a moment, because I think the county attorney wanted to comment on that.
Well, I think any restrictions really have to be rationally and reasonably related. And as Michael said, the three acres actually narrowed it even more. And it was inconsistent with the M1 zoning designation that we staff has determined is the best location for these type of facilities. So I would recommend keeping it at the one acre minimum to be consistent with other M1 zone properties. And maybe, I don't know if it's a good time, I don't know what the supplemental standards will be, or if it has to be a conditional use. But I think that's certainly maybe a good opportunity to discuss some of those. I don't know if that would address some of the board's concerns that it has a disjuncture in one way, but.
Yeah, and it's, well, that's the next item, but it doesn't really get into those specifics. It's not a conditional use that was, that was removed because we're isolating a district. But again, we did, we had that conversation. You know, I want to make sure you know that we did discuss that between the three and the one. And we felt it was more consistent with those things that we're requiring within a M1 district from anyone else. Any other land use in M1 would have the same requirement. And, you know, is it being overly obtrusive to not say, well, this one particular use in M1 has to, it has to have, you know, greater acreage? And then I think you're getting into that area again with the legal defensibility of that stance.
Okay. Well, again, to the extent it is, if it'd be greater than one acre instead of three, two, or whatever, that's something to take a look at. When we first brought this up, I think the map did not have the cities' areas that they had zoned. And we were going to put that on here. Am I to take it, the cities do not have any designated areas?
No, I'm sorry, I've got about 20 maps in my office, you can imagine. And I do have a map, I don't have it with me right now, but it reflects, each one of the cities does have a designated area. Stockbridge, McDonough, Locust Grove, Ann Hampton, they have designated areas. And typically, it is, they have a designated area. In Stockbridge, theirs is along North Henry Boulevard, Locust Grove. Still not quite exactly sure where Locust Grove, but we've seen a couple of different maps, yeah.
It's going to be on Bill Gardner.
On Bill Gardner Parkway.
Next to Strong Rock School.
That's why.
I was going to say, isn't it next to Strong Rock School in that area right there?
I think, I think they're looking at that. I think they're revisiting their location as well. Hampton, 1941.
Yeah, that's, that's what I think we saw when we looked at the map, that Locust Grove is exposed from our school to it, exactly. Next question is the, we keep talking about 1,000 feet from proposed location. Are we talking property line to property line? Are we talking to the building, to the parking lot? Or how does?
How do you measure?
How do you measure 1,000 feet from?
For the sake of this, I believe it's 1,000 feet as measured from the property line to property line.
You believe, you believe, or you're sure? I'm not picking on you, I just, to me, it's.
No, I understand.
You put a building in the middle of a piece of land and two pieces of area, you're going to lose 1,000 feet pretty quickly.
And I remember you asked that question specifically. I want to see, one of the ways we addressed it was, "Buildings and structures established in connection with an adult entertainment facility shall be separated at least, at least 40 feet from the building and structure of any other business establishment, and a minimum of 40 feet from all property lines. No adult entertainment establishment shall be located in any strip center, must be located with on their own lot." The 1,000-foot proximities were for specific uses. And again, I don't know that we specifically address how that measurement takes place. But I would, and that's something we can certainly clarify, for it to be from property line to property line as a.
My concern is, we're talking building to building, 40 feet. And here, if you talk to 1,000, somebody may interpret the 1,000 to be building to building as well. So I think property line, somebody has property in the back. I look at 155, where some of these proposed areas are, that could be an issue possibly there. The adult dance establishment, we are allowing them, is that correct, in this adult entertainment? And it's, that's defined as topless and/or bottomless, and we're allowing both? Is that correct or not correct?
Yes.
This goes to the, the constitutional challenges that surround these type of establishments. And that dancing has been deemed by our Supreme Court of the United States as being protected by First Amendment standards because the entertainer is attempting to express something to the viewer. So, yes, we're not restricting that. But I think.
So you're saying the constitution allows total nudity, is what you're saying?
Well, I think, are we, I think there should be something here that requires some kind of covering of some sort.
Again, under adult dance establishments, it does speak that that feature performances by topless and/or bottomless dancers.
We can, we can, that's another item, perhaps we can take a look at to sort of, I've seen other jurisdictions, and I did not catch this before and now, Commissioner Alletta, but we can certainly look at requiring some type of appropriate covering over certain areas. And I can, so we can take a look at that.
Okay.
You always.
But you can't restrict bottomless, it has to be, the best you can do is some type of covering, which still.
That's correct. That's protect the speech, protect the speech, yes.
Okay, just want to let everybody know. Is there, I think there was a discussion earlier about this of workers in three years, or three convictions or whatever else. Can't we put something in that says, to the extent a worker has been previously convicted for, say prostitution, they're not permitted to work in one of these establishments? Are we not allowing someone of that character to go into an establishment to basically change the definition of what we're trying to allow to be constitutionally correct?
Do you mean for someone who's working there, or?
The dancers, or whatever else it may be, if they've been previously convicted of.
And that is addressed, that's addressed. Section 3-17-13 states, item two states that no person who has ever been convicted of or entered a plea of nolo contendere to a felony or a crime that would be a felony if committed in the state of Georgia shall be permitted to be an employee of an adult entertainment establishment. So that has been addressed.
I was reading another one, and I didn't see it there. It sounded like.
And item three in that same co-section addresses prostitution and solicitation.
Establish, establishments such as this in the metro area?
Not that we have seen in our research. And I think that, that's a good point. I think that point alone is probably one of the most restrictive deterrents from having these type of establishments within a community. It's not allowing alcohol, or either to be served and/or on the premises in this case.
Of course, we're not doing this as a deterrent, we're just placing reasonable restrictions on.
That's correct, thank you. Let's give it a clarification.
Any other questions or comments? All right, is it, is it the pleasure of the board to have the public hearing today and take public comment, allow staff to go back and consider some of the requests for changes that were made, and then come back tomorrow for consideration of adoption?
I think we've advertised for public comment and public hearing, I think we at least, there might be a couple of gentlemen here that would like to make a comment. We probably need to promote that, allow that, excuse me.
Okay. Is there anyone in, since this is public comment, anyone in the audience who wishes to come and speak in reference to this matter? If not, then I will look to the board for a motion. If you would like to table this till tomorrow evening, or if you would like to consider adopting it today, or any other action. Don't all, don't all jump at one time.
Just to move forward. I think we need to go ahead and move forward to the point that we adopt with, and I'm saying adopt, should we adopt today with provisions for tomorrow night? Or should we just?
Well, if the pleasure is to adopt it, we can certainly take those items and come back with an amendment to include some revisions to it. And it may be better to do that, Commissioner Holder and Madam Chairman. And we can, and staff can have appropriate time to add those very legitimate items that you've said. Nothing that has been stated today, as far as the board's very good comments and concerns, would, I think, prevent us from moving forward with having this adopted. And within 30, 45 days, we can come back with those additional items to add to it. I know it's sort of cumbersome, but this is a very weighty thing, and we sort of have gone through it a number of times, so.
I know that we cannot continue to delay and continue the moratorium on and on and on because that weakens us if we ever did have a challenge.
Yes, sir.
And before I make a motion, Michael, as far as the distance, and I know Commissioner Alletta brought that up, why could this measurement of distance be consistent with what we do for alcohol?
Sure.
And in that case, they can't say we were singling adult entertainment out and treating them differently than we do alcohol licenses? I mean, I think, that's just a thought. With that, I move to approve, Madam Chair, the amendment to our current adult entertainment ordinance with the amendments that have been, the changes that have been made by staff.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve with the amendments made by staff. Is there a second? Will you second it, and then we'll have a discussion?
Okay, second.
Okay, second, and for the sake of discussion.
Okay. I'm a bit confused. I thought what you were saying is the amendments would come in 30 days from now. But what I understand, the motion is that the amendments would be added to what we're passing today, so.
No, the amendments are what staff had presented in due text today. What we've discussed today will come as an amendment, is what I'm understanding. That's my thought. But what we have here in the background summary, that's, that's the amendments that y'all have already made, correct?
Correct. These are amendments to the current adult entertainment.
That's correct.
Then basically, what I'm understanding is that the issues that we brought up and going to add to this proposed amendment here would not be in effect until we, again, come back here 30 days from now. And if someone were to apply between now and those 30 days, would they be also affected by the changes 30 days? Would they be grandfathered under current? I'm not saying anybody's going to come in in 30 days, but again, I'm logic in worst case. It says we're trying to do certain other things. But if we pass this and have it applicable to anybody that comes in for a license today, they're not bound by what we pass 30 days from now, I would think, because it'd be grandfathered in the existing. So my concern is somewhat to say, I would rather tomorrow night, because I think you said we still have another day, to put those into this and have it all done at one time. Because there weren't that many things. And then we vote on it with it in versus waiting 30 days to come back and put those items in.
Commissioner Alletta, what, if someone, if you approve this revised ordinance today, that will be the law of the county as it pertains to this item. If it, the suggestions that the board has made, especially the half-mile buffer and the other items, I think we need to be able to look at that to make sure that's not overly restrictive of the designated areas that we're looking at. I think certainly the coverings on the body and certain other things we can add that won't be too substantive of a change from what you all are, will approve today. So I think at the end of the day, you probably would be better off having the revised ordinance passed as opposed to having someone come up under the existing ordinance where you don't have many of the protections that are in this revised ordinance.
But the existing, the. But it doesn't expire until tomorrow, is that what I understand?
It expires the 18, I think.
The moratorium extends through October 18.
Through October 18. Well, I guess when I look at it, that would be midnight tonight, then, after 12:01 a.m., the 18 will be over, yeah.
So it expires tonight, waiting tomorrow. Somebody rushes in tomorrow and says, I want to go under the old, now the moratorium's up, we're even more exposed?
Yes, I apologize. Now that I look at it, you know, mid, when October 18th comes, it's expired, the moratorium expires.
All right, well, we have the option then today to extend the moratorium an additional day and table the item if that's the pleasure of the board.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Alletta, would you like to rescind your second, or would you like to let it stand? it stand?
I'd like to rescind it. Instead, I'd like to see this tomorrow with the items that we talked about. The concern I have is what appears to be brought up, and I don't know if that's what you're saying, County Attorney, is that you may not be able to research this well enough to add these other items in by tomorrow night?
We will, we will get it done.
Okay. Then yes, I rescind my second.
All right. So I'm going to call one more time for a second to Mr. Holder's motion unless he wishes to rescind his motion. Is there a second? All right, the motion dies for lack of a second. At this time, I'll look for an alternate motion on this item.
Madam Chair, if I could, if the moratorium has to be extended, it does not need to be extended for one day. It needs to be more like thirty days to sixty days because I can assure you with the research that the staff has done, with the recommendations that they have brought to us, they cannot make a determination in one day and be one hundred percent right and have done the due diligence they need to to be sure that this, these changes will withstand the challenge. I would encourage the board to extend the moratorium for either thirty or sixty days to give staff time to research this and be sure that these changes can be defensible.
Would you like to make that in the form of a motion?
I will make it. In fact, I will extend it. I would like to see it sixty days. A moratorium for sixty days.
All right. We have a motion on the floor to table, table this item and extend the moratorium an additional sixty days.
I was going to recommend that we extend it to a date certain. I think we, last time we ran into a situation where the sixteenth day fell right before a board meeting. So I was going to look for the county clerk to...
Say, can you look at your calendar real quick and see?
I think a good date. We can extend the moratorium until January one, twenty twelve. That's about, it's over sixty, but it's less than ninety. So...
Commissioner, I think we tried to do the passes, tie it back to a specific meeting date, so we know we're going to hear it at that particular...
Well, we know we're not going to meet on January the first.
No. So whatever, if it's the board's desire that first meeting, January, the last meeting...
We should be able to have the information by December, so we should be okay.
January third.
January third. The first meeting in January then?
To make it to January third.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to table this item and to extend the moratorium till, to January third, twenty twelve.
And Madam Chairman, if staff is able to come up with recommendations before that time and, and show the board its findings, it would be acceptable to bring it back before that time with proper notice and advertisement within that timeframe?
I believe so. I believe so. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. All right, the next item is the public hearing to request the amendment to the ULDC adult entertainment establishments. And since that's sort of a moot point right now, then...
We hear both at the same time on January third, as the board's desire.
Okay, I need a motion for someone to table that to, to January third, two thousand twelve or earlier.
That's a motion to table. This is part of the amendment to December, to January third, two thousand twelve.
All right, we have a motion to table by Mr. Stamey, a second by Mr. Alletta. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is under county manager. We have a resolution requesting approval of a contract for local option sales tax, lost negotiation preparation work. Our presenter is Butch Sanders, county manager, exhibit number eight. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. As you know, after every decennial census, the county is tasked with renegotiating the lost agreement with the all qualified municipalities within the county. That is coming up upon us very quickly. And there are, we have entertained a proposal for assistance with a consulting company, Sutton Consulting Company, where they have delivered a, a proposal to analyze and quantify the eight factors very specifically that are listed, listed in the state law that will govern the lost negotiations, help develop strategies for using the results of that analysis in, in study. And also, they have agreed to expand on a tax equity study. Because as we all know, in these negotiations, one of the most contentious questions concerns double taxation. And this tax equity study will speak directly to that and give us a leg up in that, in the negotiations in that particular area. Had a chance to sit down with Mr. Sutton and negotiate the pricing of the study and have come back with a seventeen thousand, five hundred dollar figure for the study. In addition, there would be fifteen hundred dollars for document preparations and travel. So I'm making that proposal. We have that proposal in the form of a contract and I would recommend the approval of such.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? Okay. If not, the only thing I would ask is in the resolution that you will enter the dollar figures in the resolution. I don't see where that's referenced here, but we do need to add that to the resolution. If there are no further questions or comments from the board, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holder, a second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries four zero. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is under our county attorney. We have a resolution requesting approval of an interim management and consultant agreement, consultant agreement regarding operations at Terra Field Airport. Our presenter is Latonya Wiley, county attorney, exhibit number nine.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board. This past July, when the board passed the resolution to enter into a purchase agreement to acquire Terra Field, one of the directives in that resolution was to locate, identify, and the opportunity to enter into a professional management arrangement with a company that was suited to run Terra Field. Even prior to that directive in the resolution, there were numerous discussions with an entity known as AFCO, Avports LLC, a professional managed aviation management company. And those contracts and discussions were initiated largely through the efforts of Commissioner Alletta. By the way of background, since we closed on the property on August nineteenth, we have been in a transition period with Clayton County, utilizing basically on a contractual basis the services that they already had through existing employees there. And as our finance department was able to get the accounts in order that Clayton County had, the ones that the county, Henry County wanted to keep, we have been in that process since August nineteenth. As of September thirtieth, with the payment of the temp, first payment, two million dollars under the contract, we certainly have now entered the stage where operations of the airport are solely the responsibility of Henry County. So what is before you today is a proposed interim six-month management agreement and consulting agreement with Avports, where Avports has agreed to provide professional support for airport operations. It's important to note that this six-month agreement is at no cost to the county for the professional services that will be provided. There is an approved operating budget that this board approved a month or so ago with respect to the airport, and those expenses will be run accordingly. The only other expense that perhaps would be included that's not in our current budget would be the cost of a general manager. However, there are personnel costs within the approved operating budget, but Avports has, in this contract, proposed to offer up a general manager for the airport, recommend that you all hire or either loan someone who has the appropriate expertise to manage the airport. So there is personnel cost. That personnel cost would be an additional cost that's not currently, that will be through Avports, but is within the approved budget for the airport. Some of the services that will be provided under this arrangement, some of the essential services, will be providing daily management of the airport in terms of management operations in order to optimize and increase airport operations, helping to ensure that the runways, ramps, airport vehicles and equipment are operating properly and in good repair and in accordance with FAA standards, to maintain the airport grounds, provide general consultation on property facilities and development for the airport, assist the county in our overall compliance with FAA standards and regulations, such as helping to establish an airport operations safety program and an airport noise mitigation program. Avports has proposed to keep track of all the aircraft landing at the airport, handle the billing and the fees associated therewith, and most importantly, I think for our purposes, to help provide technical assistance as we move forward in the efforts to expand the airport runway, which the county manager has been overseeing on that regard, in that regard, and has issued RFPs, I believe, for professional engineering services in that regard. So Avports would work with, proposes to work with county manager in the, any engineering outfit that is ultimately selected for that purpose. They also provide, offer to provide mark, assistance with marketing efforts in order to attract well-paying tenants to the airport, and overall just provide the county with a number of those professional management experiences that it has provided to other airports. In your executive summary, there are a list of other airports for which airports currently provide such services to on the various levels. And I've, Albin International Airport, Atlantic City International Airport, Newark, Rhode Island, Stewart International Airport, Teterboro Airport, to name a few. So I'll, with the assistance of Commissioner Alletta, if I have, I'm giving you a general broad overview of what's in the contract, the proposed contract. And the goal is to have a six-month interim arrangement as we move forward towards a more larger, long-term arrangement for the operation of the airport. Commissioner Alletta, if you would like to add or amplify anything I've said, I would appreciate it.
Let me go back a little bit so that everybody understands. This is not done with strictly a one-person or one-company discussion. I started somewhere back in February. I found my notes, started back in February, trying to call companies I thought that might be interested as we were negotiating, not knowing if we would end up being with favorable conclusion, but trying to understand the consulting side of it or what we could do to minimize our cost, either losses or the cost of, of the acquisition. During that process, I spoke with four different companies. Two of them flat out, after some discussions, said they weren't interested, and I thought they're, they're very reputable companies. One of them recommended Avports. And after I called, spoke with them, they were not only very interested, but they actually did fly here to speak with representatives as to what their credentials were and take a look at the properties. They also assisted us at no cost during the race, Terra Field, so that they had a flavor of what, what there was and what excitement they can have. Part of the deal, part of the agreement that we have, and as of last week's negotiations on Friday, sending back the draft that Latonya had, County Attorney had done, there, there was, there is a section now, so noted, it's called a draft deal terms, which will be eliminated for, the history here, that when, in the negotiating with them as to a deal, the deal that was negotiated and somewhat concluded was that it was a three-phase deal. The first one is basically similar to this, which is an interim agreement, and it would be, again, consulting at no cost, as this is. Tied in with it at the same time was a second part that basically said, once the runway was contracted out, there would be a second agreement, and, or part of that similar agreement would be a seventy-thirty share. They would take seventy thirty, seventy percent of the losses, if there were any, we would only share thirty. And then, once the runway was completed, they would take over and manage it at no cost of any losses, if any, to us. And also included in that operating cost would be the reimbursement of the bond cost, which would include principal of what the acquisition included or expansion of the runway. So basically, at the end of that, there would be no cost to the county. What's happened since then is that our outside counsel had suggested that this agreement be broken into two or three agreements, not making them all one agreement. And as a result of that, discussions then were made to try and bust the total agreement into three sections or two sections. In doing so, to get this completed, they didn't have time to draw up a second, third agreement. And in order to move this forward and get it going and get the consulting services on, on here, get here, this is the only agreement we have at this time. The section that was going to be draft deal terms at this point are not available. And basically, during the six-month interim period, there will be negotiations which should equal or be similar to the, the agreement that was already put in front of us and negotiated. I can't say with certainty that will happen. I'm a little, a little upset that we had to do it this way because the other agreement was all-inclusive and would have included, as I said, but when the runway was completed, they would assume the management of it. And as a result of that, if there were losses, they would be a hundred percent theirs. And as I said, included in the operating cost would be the payments to the bonds or financing to purchase the airport, which would take that off the citizens of this county. I still hope that will be the case, but I just wanted to bring that up at this point, that that is not something that's presently in this interim agreement for those reasons. Couple of items that I also felt that probably should bring up, and that is, this calls for an airport operations manual and an airport security plan, which at the present time, neither, neither of which the county has, but they will assist us in the preparation of those documents during the six-month period. And it's something that's essential to obviously running a safe airport and organized airport at the same time. So that's something we need and they will be working on that during this period. They're, they're going to be able to work with us during this period of time to work on the increase in the operational capabilities of the existing main runway, which obviously is a key thing to moving this forward. Section two oh six, because there's always an issue of transparency and questions that come up, two point oh six says, "The county and the contractor, which is Avports, expressly acknowledge their mutual understanding and agreement that there are no third-party beneficiaries to this interim agreement." I just want to present that that is the case. This is strictly their doings and our doings of no other third parties. Again, we'll negotiate. Section seven oh one, contractors will not be entitled to receive a management fee for any of these provisions. And again, it's, again, at their cost, no, no cost to the county for their services. The one question I did have, County Attorney, is on nine point oh four, should we require a bond on their part for that provision, which is in the event any action shall be brought against the county by reason of any claim covered by section nine oh one, the contractor upon notice from the county shall at so expense, cost and expense defend the same. And it goes on to say that, you know, we can pay it and they can, they have to pay it. Should we have a bond to make sure we get that money?
What we have, Commissioner Alletta, in section ten point oh one is a very hefty insurance policy, of which Henry County will be named insured, fifty million dollars for the airport, commercial and general liability insurance, and five million dollars for any pollution liability. They will also, Avports will also maintain employer liability for its employees, who will not be employees of ours, of a million dollars, and twenty-five million dollars for any automobile liability, liability insurance, which will cover their contractor-owned or their privately-owned vehicles while operating on airport premises. So this, very heavily insured, so I would not see the need for having an additional bond.
Okay. And then nine oh five, it says the county is responsible for disclosing or notifying the contractor of any unsafe property counties aware that's an unsafe condition exists. I take it that we have known or we've done the study on that, that we can give that assurance to them or so note? to them or so note?
Can.
Okay. And then the environmental study, phase one, there's also a clause in here that they will not be liable for anything that's so noted in that, which would make sense. I haven't seen it, and maybe I haven't, I just haven't read it, but is there anything in there at the present time in phase one?
I'm not sure if you've seen, you all have looked at so much. There was a phase one environmental study, both myself and the county manager have seen it. And there were no significant findings in that. In fact, there were none that we even needed to address at the closing, which we would have done and made Clayton County repair before we bought it. We reviewed it for closing, we found no items that were significant that would prevent us from moving forward, and so we are good there. I have informed the Airport's attorney that we will forward that phase one environmental, but I have reported the findings of that phase one environmental to them, and they were satisfied.
And the reason I bring it up is per 9.06, to the extent that they feel that it needs to have another phase one study that will be at their cost, provided there's nothing in phase one we have that would justify needing, and if so, then we have to mutually. So basically, what you're telling me is they want one that would be totally at their cost as per paragraph 906?
That's right.
Okay. In 9.09, I'm not sure I understand this, "In the event," maybe I read it too late or something, "the event that a direct claim cannot be asserted against the county for any of the events as specified in Article 9, and contractors held liable, the county shall be responsible for reimbursing the contractor all costs." To me, if it can't be asserted to us, and they're held liable, why would we be reimbursing them?
Now, those are for clients for which we are responsible. We have, that provision was inserted in lieu of the indemnification provisions. Typically, what we see when we contract with third parties, they want the county to agree to indemnify the contractor if the contractor is found liable for anything that we did. And so they will want that assurance that we will pay them back if our actions, our gross actions or negligence, caused that. The Georgia Supreme Court has held that those indemnification provisions that the counties enter into conflict with sovereign immunity protection that we enjoy as a government. So we oftentimes find ways and craft language that would give a vendor the necessary assurance that the county will be responsible for our negligence, our actions directly caused by us. So if we directed someone to do something that was totally inappropriate, and there was liability that failed from that, then the county would assume that responsibility. That's what that is intended to address.
Going up to 9.06B, I would, at the end of B, it says, "Relating to or arising out of, in whole or part, contractor performance." Would it not be appropriate to put performance or non-performance in there? Add the words non-performance?
Yes, sir, I can certainly, we can certainly add that.
And then the insurance, which you mentioned earlier, they are to buy that insurance, and then it'll be operating cost and reimbursed per exhibit C. Are we, and I know we have the ability to buy insurance probably at pretty good rates, we probably need to put something to make sure that at least they're buying it and that we have input from a competitive standpoint between our ability to get better premiums. But it says per this, they're supposed to buy it. And then, of course, it is a reimbursable expense in exhibit C, which would make sense since it's being bought for the operations of the airport. Or the other side of it is, since it's interim, maybe we should be buying the insurance because it's operating cost anyways, and avoid them buying, reimbursing, and so on.
I may coordinate our coverage with airports.
Okay.
Ease our sources.
Okay.
And we can put language in there that says that the parties will use best efforts to coordinate.
One thing that's not in here, it doesn't describe the ratings of the insurance companies that these policies will be bought from. I think we should have some type of rating in there, AAA or AA1 or something, to ensure, especially when you start getting $50 million worth of coverage, we've got extremely reputable insurance companies that are providing this.
Okay.
And then the operating budget basically is one that we've already done, but according to this, they have 30 days, I believe it's 30 days, maybe 10, to prepare one and submit it. And with this being an interim budget, and it goes into other have-to-approved and so on, I'm a little concerned maybe that we've got one, they've got 30 days to prepare one, if it isn't approved, what happens and all that? So ours may not be as solid, if you would, because we've not operated an airport, and theirs probably would be much more open, if you would, to less scrutiny.
Yeah, and the agreement gives the county the ultimate control over the establishment of that budget. And so I have sent to them the approved budget that you all did a month or so ago, and I don't think that they had any significant problems with it, but I anticipate that they probably have more expertise in refining that. But at the end of the day, you all retain control over approving that budget. So if there were any amendments to that budget, refinements of it, it would have to come back to you for approval. And before you got to that point, the county manager and the county finance director certainly will have their hands-on role in discussing and resolving those issues.
Okay. 11.04, it says that we be obligated to pay the contractor the following, which is fees and commissions, and it goes on from there. There really are no commissions payable to them as some word commissions in there. What, in what context would they be in if they're not being paid any commissions? Is this for outside contractors being paid on commissions that we approve? Because according to this, all these expenditures have to be in the operating budget before they can spend it. And if it's approved, then in fact, we're covered, but they can't engage us in any other contracts without our approval, so.
I think that's not included, that's not a part of what's in the agenda book. That was something that came in Friday as part of that, that 11.04, and I certainly have a question mark to take that out. It has been the expressed intent of Airport's officials and their attorneys that they will not charge anything other than what's in this approved budget. All the costs and expenses will be flown or run through the approved budget that you all have approved, and they will operate in accordance with that.
Again, that may have been in there before as part of the phase two, phase three, which obviously is not part of this interim. So some of this wording may have snuck in.
Yeah.
Accidentally got in, if you would, because they didn't get all get out. One thing I do want to point out in 11.06, that, again, the sole purpose of them being down here and consulting is that they are trying, going to work towards a long-term agreement. They're doing this consulting services for free, and again, working towards a long-term agreement. So it's not a surprise that if they, at the end of six months, that is what they present. And again, with terms that are, hopefully, they'll remain at the terms of which they previously expressed, which I think they will be. The other is that I think it's important to point out is 13.01, "None of the services covered by this interim agreement shall be subcontracted without prior approval of the county." So basically, we are getting them. And I guess along those lines, I should have done this first, you can go to their website and take a look at their, who they are. Just to brief, their developer, according to the website, developer and manager, and also from, we've had them vetted, if you would, have been county manager by various people within FAA and others, to vet them as to these are appropriate.
That occurred in our first discussions with Airport.
Right. "The developer and manager of airport infrastructure facilities in U.S. operates over 8 million square feet of un-cargo warehouse and apron spaces, well as FBOs." County Attorney mentioned the places that they're at. This company was started in 1927 as an airport division of Pan Am. As I understand it, back then, the only way they could, Pan Am could get started is they actually had to go out and build these airports, because there weren't any back then. And Pan Am was the one, and this was the arm that was doing it, which later they spun off, and it's been owned by a couple of other companies since, financially strong. They have that they're the undisputed leader in the industry, with their portfolio having eight FAA-certified airports, 80 years of unrivaled reputation for exceptional service, quality, and the highest standards of safety, efficiency, and accountability. Their vision is to create greater wealth and economic activity at airports by adding more and more value to stakeholders by being a full-service provider of choice for public and private airport owners, by offering the market's most comprehensive menu of airport services with unassailable proficiency and single-point accountability. So to the extent that we are trying to make this an economic engine, that is their background for the past 80 years, along those lines. We are covered under 1603, I believe. At least my interpretation is that, yes, we will be applying for grants to do things such as expand the airport, but we're so covered that that grant money is our money, not theirs, just because they're in the process of helping us, the grant money is so designated as ours. They have no part, part and parcel to any of it.
That's correct.
Oh, on 1901, and this is mentioned a couple of times, it mentions the airport department on behalf of the county. It's my understanding, we do not have an airport department per se right now, so either we have to create one or give that a different designated name so that it is how, if you would, these notices are supposed to be given and part of how this will operate, so.
I put the county manager as the contact person for all notices related to the airport. If there were some management issue, he would be the designated contact person. I don't know about the departmental issue. I think, Butch, can you speak to that?
I think through, through my office, it makes sense.
Did we just designate the county manager as the airport department?
We have.
So that it is coincides with what the line was for this is being taken place. Also, 2313, I think is worthy of at least noting, "The contractor and the county each represent warrants to the other that no broker or finder has been concerned or involved on its representative behalf in the negotiation interim agreement, and there is no broker who is or may be entitled to be paid a commission in connection therewith." This was all negotiated, as I said, since whenever.
That would be.
May, since May, I guess, and that's where it's at, but it so states that.
That's right.
The other is that in exhibit A, 1.1, general public, it's supposed to be open to general public seven days a week, 16 hours a day, or such days and or hours may be agreed. At the present time, it is not open seven, it's only open five days a week.
Five days a week.
Eight hours a day?
Seven thirty to five.
And our budget is based on that, so again, any changes to expand that would have to change with the budget as well, as far as needing services and income to go with it. But it says it can be as much as that, but it does not have to be, it's, as per agreement And again, we mentioned the town halls, which are covered, again, in exhibit A to assist us with town halls for noise abatement issues and other issues that, about the expansion of the runway. There's a request for an audit, and the problem I have is, I don't think it's applicable here, because the audit cannot be done until the end of the year, June 30th. They're going to, this contract, if we did it, put it in place today, six months?
With session, with session, Commissioner.
I haven't gotten to it, I just, I saw something else, and it's, there's a.
No, there's a provision that allows.
There's a provision.
Our finance director to.
Right.
Audit at any time.
Right, he can go in, anybody can go in anytime, check their records and so on.
Yes, sir.
But it does call for an actual audit itself. But again, by the time this agreement expires, they will be gone. So that, I don't know if it really is necessary in this agreement, other than the fact we would have an audit, unless we were to move it up earlier, which would not make sense, and it'd cost more money to do it. So I just don't know if that clause is necessary.
I'll look at that.
There it is, under L. There it is, on page 35, my 35, page 35. "For an annual audit of the airport, provide no later 120 days at the end of the fiscal year." And again, fiscal year, this is a six-month agreement, this will be over by then. I think that does it. I just thought those were items that I thought, I thought it might be interested in to understand we've covered those items in there. The rest of it, I think.
I also think it's important to know that this includes operating the FBOs during this interim period as well. They will be providing the management, the consulting, and the FBO services operations during this six-month interim period.
I do have one other thing, it's in exhibit C, and this is for the Director of Finance here, he can take a look at this, but it requires us to fund the account by the, within five days of receipt, or where's it, put funds into the account, I believe by the 15th of the month. One thing that might be considered is, to the extent there's surplus, that the amount even would, we're supposed to fund the operating budget for the upcoming month, I believe by the 15th. One of the things that we might want to take a look at is extending the verbiage to include, to the extent there's a surplus from the previous month, that the operating budget for the next month might be reduced to keep the cash flow down, to not have to fund, continue leaving excess funds or surpluses in the account. There was one change I did find, I just remembered, there is a 1.2 reference, there it is, on 1.3 in exhibit C, it had section 1.5 about the shortfall payments, and it should be 1.6. 1.5 is not, 1.5 is not the shortfall infusion payments, it's 1.6, unless there's another draft that I'm not seeing, so. There's a lot more to it, I've taken up a lot of time, but I thought these are issues that, since this agreement is only 40, was it 45 pages long or something like that, small print and all, that those items are covered to let everybody know that those considerations were given and how they were brought about.
Well, first of all, on behalf of the board, Commissioner Oletta, I want to say thank you for taking the bull by the horn, so to speak. I know this lies in your district, and you took it very personally to try to find the best airport management company, to come in and work with Henry County to assure that that investment would be successful going forward in the future. And you've put countless hours into this, and I know I'm appreciative of it, and I'm sure the other board members are as well, and you've done a very thorough job. Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this proposed agreement with Airport?
I'd just like to echo what you just said about thinking, Commissioner Oletta, because I can assure you, there have been countless hours and that he has spent with not just airports, but throughout the whole process, that probably I would not have had the opportunity or the ability to have understood, nor time to read all of the stuff that he's read. This may have taken time today, but can you imagine how many hours he spent trying to gather? Then this one contract's just a part of the whole deal, not the entire process. So my hat's off to Commissioner Oletta, I think you've done a wonderful job, and I appreciate it, because I believe, after hearing you bring this to the board, that in your own, that you feel this is in the best interest of Henry County, and I would have to tend to agree, because I could not dispute it. Thank you.
Anyone else with a question or comment? Okay. If not, you have before you a resolution to approve a six-month interim management and consultant agreement with AFCO, Airport's Management LLC regarding operations at Terrorfield Airport. And since this lies in District 2, I'll look to Mr. Oletta for a motion.
So move to approve the two or three items, if you could, to change some of that language in draft and get that out, and then the others that are mentioned, clean them.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a board appointment. It's a resolution requesting appointment to the McIntosh Trail Community Service Board. We received a letter from McIntosh Trail requesting that Mary Evans Battles be reappointed to that position. Her appointment actually expired on June 30th, 2011, and there was an oversight when Mr. Gosnell was reappointed. Ms. Battles should have come at the same time. And there is on the third, whereas, we need to correct the resolution, but if there are no objections to reappointing Ms. Mary Evans Battle to that term, I will look to someone to make a motion of that effect.
To the point of what you just mentioned, where is it, where, that should just be deleted, should it not? Has nothing to do with this, does it? Just, where is Mr. Gosnell served?
That's going to be corrected.
Okay. Okay.
That was the correction I referenced.
Okay, very good. So that'd be Mary, Mary Evans?
Mary Evans Battle.
Okay, very good.
Does any, would anybody like to make a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
By Mr. Alletta, and a second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. At this time, we're going to move on to the approval of the minutes, and we're going to take these separately, because we had some folks that were absent, and we're going to look, first of all, at September 6, 2011. Are there any, other than grammatical changes, are there any additions to these minutes? If not, Mr. Holder was absent for this meeting, so I'll look to someone else to make a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries 4-0. The second set of minutes are September 19 and September 20. Mr. Bowman was absent, celebrating his 40th anniversary?
Forty-fifth.
Forty-fifth anniversary, and certainly a good reason not to be here. Are there any corrections to be made to those minutes? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve those. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Alletta, all in favor. Motion carries 4-0. The final sets of minutes are from September 27, 2011, and if there are no additions to those, I'll look for a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Alletta, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. Did anyone sign up for public comment?
I do have a comment I'd like to make, if you don't mind.
Okay, Mr. Bowman, please.
Was that mine? I've received a number of calls, and it's in reference to the senior center in Hidden Valley. A number of constituents from the 4th District use that senior center, or on a senior center on a daily basis. It's come to my attention that there's a, appears to be a large segment of Clayton County that's using the senior center, and our District Four seniors feel like they're being basically moved out of their senior center. It seems that we have a very low rate for outside of county people to join that senior center, and I have had a little bit of conversation with our county manager over that. In the recent weeks, there's been some quote-unquote 15 or 16-year-olds in the pool room, in the pool area playing, and it's a senior center, it's not a rec center. And so just because I've received so many calls, I felt like it was necessary to address this in a public venue, and have a, to get, you know, to have our county manager and our assistant take a hard look at it. I realize that I'm kind of stepping over my bounds, because Stockbridge does not, or 4th District, excuse me, does not have a senior center, much like Hampton, the other cities do. Thought I'd bring that up, thank you, Mr. Alletta. But anyway, the 4th District utilizes that senior center, and we would, you know, we would really like to make sure that it's in use for our citizens. They're charged a lot of money if they go to the senior center in Clayton County, so I think that at least our fees ought to be similar to those in Clayton County, so that our citizens can enjoy what their taxpayer dollars have built. And that's my comment, and it also is, hopefully, that we can get some information on that and move forward with some changes in how we deal with the center and how we deal with the fees that are charged to out-of-county residents that use that center.
Do you know what the Clayton County, out-of-county fees are?
I've been given several numbers, and I'm not, you know, I've been told it's up as much as $185 a year, and I've been told that it's $6 to eat there, where I was just like $25 a year, and it's $3.5 or $4, I'm not sure. I did mention that to Butch, and it's not, I mean, I've been away for a few days, so it's, you know, I haven't had time to get with Butch, but I felt like it was something that needed to be stated in public, simply because I've gotten so many complaints and, you know, inquiries about, you know, what's going on at our senior, or our senior centers for the north end.
Well, I know we did implement a $25 out-of-county fee this year, and that may not be sufficient to deal with the problems going on up there, so certainly.
We should take a definite look at the out-of-county fees and consider increasing the fees. I've had conversations with Butch and Butch about the issues over at the Hidden Valley Senior Center, and they're taking a serious look at it, and hopefully, we'll find some solutions soon.
And it services an awful lot, I mean, because it's close in proximity to, well, you know, District Four obviously is right on the line there, pretty close. I mean, so it services the north end of the county, whereas you don't get, you don't get a lot of people going to, say like Heritage, you know, the one there, or going down to the, you know, Locust Road facility. You won't see a lot of people coming from out-of-county to those, simply because of the proximity, but we need to do something to secure that area and secure that for the seniors. And I talked with Butch a little bit about it, and that, you know, being a grandfather and having nine grandkids, if I were somewhere out of, out of this area and my grandkids visited and I wanted to take them to the senior center, that's one thing, but, you know, it was kind of strange to me in that a couple of these occasions, they were supposed to be in school, you know, and I questioned, well, if, you know, if they were sick, what were they doing there? You know, so there's some issues there, and hopefully, our rec department can take care of those, but I just felt like with all the inquiries that I've gotten and calls that felt like it needed to be stated publicly, so that our citizens know that we're looking after it, you know, we're going to look into it and see what we can come up with.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. County Manager, anything for public comment?
Just in response to Mr. Bowman and Mr. Holmes' comments, both Mr. Oliver and I have made some phone calls. We're looking at it from a, from a fee schedule, as well as some rules and regulations there, maybe to tighten some things down there. So I mean, I think it is to our credit that we charge less for meals for our seniors. We just don't want it, we just don't want to be taken advantage of there. So that's it for now.
Mr. County Attorney, anything for public session? Upcoming meetings and events, tomorrow, October 18, at 6:30 p.m., we have a regular board meeting. Monday, October 31, at 9 a.m., we have a workshop meeting, and Tuesday, November 1, at 9 a.m., a regular board meeting. November 8 is Election Day in Henry County, but also, you can early vote now at the elections office, I believe, and there is an education splosh that's on the ballot, so those who are not concerned about the election, because it looks like it's just a city election, there is a county-wide election. And again, that's going to be November 8, that's the actual election day, but you can begin voting today. Monday, November 14, at 9 a.m., and Tuesday, November 15, at 6:30 p.m., those are both regular board meetings. At this time, I do need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of potential pending litigation, personnel, and land acquisition matters. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries 4-0. If there's no further business to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Alletta, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. We stand adjourned.